I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't have my PEPF buddy sitting over here anymore, but there is no comma or pause between one nation and another. Okay? I want to put that in there though.
Have it.
I had to get a breath.
I know it's heavy. Some folks needed a breath. And I got a text from Mr. Savin. He's en route from Hamilton and maybe a few minutes late, so I told him he would try to finish before he got here. Can I hear a second down there?
They need it.
All right, good evening. Let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council at 5:30 here on Tuesday, June the 2nd, and welcome everybody to this sunny day in Steenville, Texas.
Sunny, dry day.
Sunny, dry day. Before I begin tonight, I just want to welcome again our new council members, Mark McClinton and Brett Harrison, to the council, and just thanks for being here and joining the team. We just look forward to your service and just congratulations again on your willingness to serve council. Also wanted to start out by saying something about what's happened in Steenville the last since, well, actually since April 25th, I guess. I did some research online earlier today, and from April 24th, 2014 to April 25th, 2015, that's a year, and I may be off an inch or two here, but it's close, you'll get the point. Steenville received 6.45 inches of rain between April of 2014 and April of 2015. From April 26th, 2015 to June 2nd of 2015, Steenville received 23.68 inches. So thank you, Lord, for the rain. Also, thank you for the safety, but also thanks for some great work, I think, by the staff within the city. I was talking to Chief King and Chief Chu before the meeting. I just want to thank, I don't know, the council as well, both of you personally for your leadership and for your, the first responder team over that period. It's one thing to have sirens working, and thank you very much for that as well, but about the third or fourth time the sirens went off, it was, hey, this is getting old now. But you guys and gals were phenomenal in your response. Wind, rain, hail, sirens going, and you were there when you were needed. So the safety and security of the citizens have you to thank, but that's not all. There was some great work, all hours of the night, by city crews out dealing with road debris, clearing roads, dealing with storm systems that were above capacity, 117-year history, storms not to this level. And I just, we just need to thank all of you for your great work, and Pat, thanks for your team and the valiant effort that they performed night after night, day after day, storm after storm. Just a great job responding to so many issues across the city, and we just really appreciate that effort. So let's go. And I guess the last thing I want to note there is it was also a lot of great cooperation with the county, sharing resources and being able to leverage our resources together. I know, Pat, you and the commissioners worked very closely to ensure that that happened, and so thank you for that as well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' general discussion at this time. If anybody would like to come and make a general comment to the council, feel free to do so. All right, seeing none, then I'll move to the first, to item number three on the agenda, which is Atmos Energy Corporation presentation and a couple of resolutions we've got to consider tonight, so. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shelley Burnett, and I'm the manager of public affairs for Atmos Energy, and I represent the company with you guys. And what you have before you tonight, there are actually two items. The first one that's on there is the negotiation that the coalition, the consultants that you guys hire to negotiate gas rates with our company. That is the rate settlement that your consultant has sent you, that he has negotiated for you. Okay, that's the first one. The second one is where you actually join that committee again, okay? So the first one, I want to let you know, the increase that we filed for was about 21.9 million for this last calendar year. We actually nego, I'm sorry, it was about 29 million. We actually negotiated with the consultants. It's Lloyd Goss, Link, and Blevins that you guys have hired as your consultant, along with about 159 other cities. And so the increase was negotiated to about 21.9, 21.8 million. And so the result of that is about $12 a year for a residential customer, and it's also about $36 a year for a commercial customer. The industrial customers' increase is about $78 a month. And so there's actually two items on our gas bill that the gas company makes money on. We do not make any money on the cost of the gas. We buy and purchase gas, and we have a blend of that, and we buy when the prices are low, and we put it in storage for the winter. We have some short-term contracts, which may be 30 days or 60 days, and then we also have some long-term contracts that, you know, pretty much long-term used to be 10 years. You know, seven or eight years ago, long-term contracts were way out there, but now a long-term contract is probably maybe 10 to 12 months or something like that. So we purchase gas during the year, and then we manage that all throughout the year, and we manage the cost of the gas to keep it as reasonable as we can for our customers. And we also submit gas cost reconciliations to the Railroad Commission annually, so they keep their eye and finger on us on the cost of the gas. Now, where we make our money is the customer charge and the consumption charge, which is actually the delivery fee. So the customer charge is kind of like your minimum bill on gas, I mean, on water bills here for the city. So our minimum charge was 1822. It's actually going up to 1862, so it will increase 40 cents a month. And then the consumption charge was .08819, I believe, per CCF, and it's going to .099. So it's about 11 cents per MCF. So in a customer's gas bill, as you can see, we probably make about $30 in the wintertime per customer, which is about four months out of the year, and then the other months of the year, it's about $20 for about eight months. So we, I want to let you guys know that we're kind of more like the cable company. We're optional, and so electricity, of course, is our competitor, and so is propane, but we have to remain reasonable, and so that's why we go up a little bit each year. We do capital infrastructure improvements, and we go up a little each year. So I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have, and so.
Yes, I was doing some research on this online, and it was discussing the fact that we have an aging gas pipeline system, some of it quite old. I'm wondering, is Steenville specifically on the list for any upgrades to our gas pipeline infrastructure here?
We do those as they, we have what we call a risk assessment, and it depends on, of course, our whole system is just like your city's water system. And so what our replacement system is, is based on the number of clamps, the number of leaks, the corrosion, all those different factors. And so what they do is whatever is based on what's next, you know, and I'm not sure what we have, you know, in line or when you guys are set for more replacement of parts. Sometimes it depends on when somebody cuts us, and when they're doing, contractors are doing work, those type of things, we look at what we have, and if there's something there that we need to replace that's right next to where we are, you know, then we go ahead and do that at that point. So we are doing capital infrastructure, and we have been for the last probably seven or eight years, and so it's been quite a few dollars that we spend.
Which I didn't see anywhere, and I may have overlooked it because there was a lot of information. Also, part of my research showed that this area of North Texas, gas prices was about 7% higher in 2013 than other states around us, which is justifiable if you are upgrading the infrastructure. I was wondering if you had a percentage amount of how, how much was going to the capital improvements?
I don't have, based on the top of my head. Now, your consultant has the list of all of our projects and all those things, and I'm sure he would be more than willing to supply that, and of course, I can submit and ask your question for the company if you would like for me to do that as well.
Just personally, I would be interested in knowing that, and thank you, appreciate your answer.
We've done about $5 billion, I believe, over the six, last six or seven years.
Well, a lot of it's very old. That was the other thing my research shows. We have like 107-year-old pipelines or something, was one of the numbers I ran across, so I was just interested in that.
Texas is ahead of the nation on replacing old infrastructure, and so, and that's one of the mandates that gets set down through the Railroad Commission. One of them recently was cast iron pipe, and we have replaced over the last couple of years every bit of cast iron pipe. I think we have still just a little bit left in the metroplex area, but as far as I know, there's none left here, and, or none in my area that I have. And so all of these things come into play when we assess the risk, what type of pipe it is, how old it is, all those type of things. And so that's how we decide what we do each year, and of course, that gets changed, just like some of the things that y'all have planned to do, but there is one difference in that we have to maintain safety and reliability. We cannot put any projects off, you know, and say, well, we'll do that out of next year's budget, or that type of thing. If it's a safety issue, then we have to do that, and so that in turn makes us a little bit different than you guys.
Right. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Let me just go ahead and ask you, Shelley, if you wouldn't mind answering those two questions for us, and you don't have to tonight, but if you could get them for us. And the first, I think I heard was, what is the percent of total budget that's committed to capital improvement? In other words, is it 2%, 7%, 8%? What is that? And then, actually, there's three questions. The second one is, what is the risk-based model that's used to determine what project is fixed next? And then the third question is, is there a project in Ereth County, in Steenville specifically, on that list? And where is it? What's next for us?
I think probably all, the question about risk that I address, you know, it depends on the age of the pipe and those type of things. And I was going to look through, I'm not sure what all your consultant shares with you, so I don't always get the information that he sends with you, but we do have a list of all the projects that were completed within the last year, and of course, we, our books are open books. I mean, they're transparent, and everything that we file for is in line with what the Railroad Commission has approved for in the past. So we don't vary from that plan, but we do negotiate a lot of times a cheaper rate because we want to remain reasonable for the customers, and it does cost a lot of money for the case, for our rates to go to the commission, to the Railroad Commission. So we try to work with the cities to get that done beforehand, but I will check on these and let you guys know.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Shelley? Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, then I'll consider a motion for the first resolution of 2015-09 to approve a negotiated settlement. It's on page 1 through 30 of our packet.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, so we have time to further study it. There's a lot of things I don't understand about it that the young lady and I talked about before the meeting, such things as the consumption charge that you see on your bill. She's telling me that that's not a charge for gas, and, okay, there's not a gas charge on the bill.
There is a cost, there is called a GCR recovery factor, which is the charge for the cost of the gas, and it is based on per CCF usage of the customer. And that's the cost that I was telling you that we manage monthly, based on the load and those type of things, and our storage where the cost of the gas comes in. And we do not make money on the cost of the gas. The only two items is the monthly charge, the customer charge, and then the consumption charge, which is the delivery fee. So we're kind of like the trucking company. So you have to pay us 18, right now it's 1822 a month for us to deliver gas, for us to, for you to have a gas meter at your home, okay? And then you pay the truck the .09919 cents per CCF to get it there. So it's kind of like you charge a certain amount, a minimum, like you guys do on your water bill, and then you guys charge so much per gallon of water consumed. So it's the exact same process, okay?
Now, I'd like to study a little bit further. I've got two questions in my mind that I'd like to go over. Nobody has objections.
Let your motion to table.
Uh huh.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Wagner, no, by Mr. Warren, seconded by Mr. Wagner, to table this resolution, 2015-09.
I have a question.
Okay.
Pat, do we have a deadline on this? Will it hurt us in any way if we bring it back next month?
Well, your consultant has already negotiated these rates for you. It's kind of, in a way, like hiring an attorney and then, you know, I guess not accepting what he has negotiated for you. So the rates do go into effect June 1st, and if you stay part of the coalition group that you're in, then you'll get that same negotiated rate. Now, if you go out on your own, by law, we could actually do what we call a GRIP process, and we are allowed by law to increase for GRIP, which is the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, which this year was actually $15 million more than what we're asking for.
Excuse me, the question was, do we have a deadline?
June the 1st is when these go into effect, and yes, by July 1st.
June 1st of next year?
No, June 1st of this year.
Yesterday.
So by July 1st is, what's July 1st?
July 1st.
What you're telling us is we don't really have any choices.
Well, you can, but it will cost you a whole lot of money to go, I mean, we would either file the GRIP because we are allowed to recap our costs, and through GRIP, those costs would actually be higher than what they are here if you choose not to file it. But by not passing it, then you're kind of going against your consultant and saying, you know, we don't want to take your recommendation. And so, you know, it's certainly up to you guys, whatever you guys want to do. I just want you to know that if you fall out, then, and you take it to the commission, if you, you know, want to file it, it's going to cost you lots of dollars in legal expenses. The increase that we're asking for is only $12 a year for residential and 36.
Well, you said a while ago you go up a little every year.
Yes, we do. We replace pipe all year long, and then we.
Well, that replacement stuff, that's built-in expense. I mean, you don't have to go up every year unless you proceed to replacements going up every year.
Well, it's a cost of our doing business, which is within our rates, okay? So it's like you guys in the city. Y'all go in, you decide to replace two streets, okay? So that goes into your total water rate system, into your total water rates or whatever, and so you guys go up. You don't just go up on those two streets. You divide it amongst your customers, which is what we do in our huge system of 440 cities.
So the negotiated settlement is part of a 400-plus city negotiated settlement?
Actually, half of our cities are part of the coalition group, and you guys are a part of the ACSE group, which is about 160 cities. There is another group called the ATM group, which is Atmos Texas Municipalities, and that group is led by Freddie Herrera and used to be Jim Boyle. There's about 60 cities that are a part of that. And the other cities that are in your group that have already passed this, Brownwood, Comanche, Abilene, and I'm sure several in the metroplex, all the cities in your group have already approved this same settlement.
I have another question.
Okay.
You implied that if we tabled this, that we'll be out of the coalition, that this settlement, negotiated settlement will no longer be available to us? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir.
Okay, well, that's what you implied.
No, I'm sorry, that's not what I meant at all. If you table it, then, you know, if you can get it done before July the 1st, then you can still stay in and get that same negotiated rate. But the negotiation did go into effect yesterday, and so, and of course, the negotiation wasn't done until, I think, the 8th or 9th. Your consultant and our company worked together for that negotiated rate, okay?
May 8th or 9th of May?
May 7th or May 8th, something like that, yes. So, and then it takes about a week for them to get all of their stuff sent to the cities and those type of things, and sometimes if you have a city manager leave or someone leave, then you end up not getting the information, and so we come back in and say, hey, did you receive your information? If not, you know, we'll try to help you. But, you know, certainly, if y'all can get it done before July the 1st, then, you know, you can stay with your group. The next item on your agenda is remaining part of the group that you guys have hired them to negotiate on your behalf. And so, and let me assure you, they review every project. They ask millions of questions, and so I just want you to let you guys know that that's how it works.
Any other questions to clarify?
Yeah, I just, it sounds to me like what you're saying is that regardless of what happens tonight, everybody's bill goes up this month.
Exactly.
And if we wait until after July 1st, everybody's bill has the potential of going up much more than it's going to go up.
If you guys don't accept the agreement, the negotiated settlement amount that your consultant, that y'all have hired to negotiate with us, then it throws you in another ballgame. And the cities that don't have consultants automatically get the negotiated rate that the consultants get, okay? So they're all treated equally by the company. So if you don't go in, you know, basically, you could, we could file GRIP, and your increase would be more than the other towns around, or if you take it to the commission, then those legal costs on both sides would be charged back to Steenville. So it's going to increase the bills even more, so, and that's just how.
I doubt, you know, I doubt if we're going to try to opt out of this or change anything. It's just I think Mr. Warren just wants some more time to think about it. The consultant, has he, I guess he's recommended that to us?
Jeffrey Gay is your consultant, and he sends you that information every year, and he works on all those projects and reviews all of that, and he's who you guys have hired to do that, all the years in the past.
We basically have 30 days to make this decision.
The other thing that you can do is you do not have to be a part of the consulting group, but you get the negotiated rate as well. I mean, it's certainly up to you guys, whichever way you want to go, and I'll be happy to answer all the questions and get you all the information that you want to know, but it's not going to change the dollars that have been negotiated for you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's like it or lump it.
Well, let me just say it another way. Item A on the agenda really is a decision that was made 365 days ago related to item B. Our decision to participate in the group resulted in what we have in A to consider tonight. So if we want to change course, item B is how we would choose to do that, because as she said, we have already paid for what has been negotiated for us, and that, you know, doesn't preclude us from spending some more time to decide whether we like it or not. So I'm, you know, I'm not disagreeing with what you said, but I think the second item on the agenda, 3B, is actually deciding whether or not we want to ask the consultant to negotiate for us next year, so.
I don't mind withdrawing the motion because it's going to end up the same way anyhow. I'll just be wasting time talking about it again. I would like to explore the possibility of using propane in the city limits, but that's a different time to do that.
Okay.
I know there's some on propane there within the city limits now, and I have some other property not in town that is on propane, and I think it's a whole lot cheaper way to go.
Right.
Nonetheless, I guess I.
You're withdrawing the motion to table?
Yeah, if that's all right.
That may.
Great. The motion to table has been withdrawn by Mr. Warren.
Mayor.
Mr. McDaniel.
I move, we passed resolution 2015-09 as presented in our agenda packet on the negotiated settlement with Atmos Gas, Atmos Energy.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Sacri, to approve Resolution 2015-09, approving a negotiated settlement as detailed in our agenda packet. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries, unanimous vote approving Resolution 2015-09.
Thank you for your time and for your questions, and I will get your questions to you, Mr. Warren. Ms. Cindy has my telephone number. If you have more questions, please get my number from her, and I'll be more than willing to help you, okay?
Well, I think, Mr. Warren, you know, that one of the background to, I think, from my perspective, one of the questions is that we want to understand the options that citizens have available for utility provision, and so, you know, this may warrant just another visit by yourself to come and meet with the council during a workshop to.
Be more than happy to.
About that, because we're, it'd be very helpful.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sheri, did you have another?
I was just going to make the comment that during my research on this, and it was not hideously extensive into the negotiation, but it actually does look like this group that we are a member of actually did a successful negotiation for us. There was a lot, if I'm not mistaken, weren't there some lawsuits back and forth with the Railroad Commission, and, not with the Railroad Commission, but I mean, this tariff, these tariffs that were applied for, and then got, I said, it was an extensive article, I didn't read the whole thing, but it actually looked like in the end that this group was a successful negotiator for us because we, there was a lot of back and forth between the Railroad Commission, this group, and Atmos, was there not?
Okay, last year's rates, we did not reach a settlement.
Right.
And it was about 43 million, 43.9, I believe. And actually, what ended up happening was we appealed to the commission because the agreement between the consultants and the company, we had some clarification that both sides wanted as to some of the language in there, and so the Railroad Commission. And so the Railroad Commission just finished that, I believe, the first part of May.
Yeah, it was a big, long, like, hundreds of pages, it looked like, and I didn't, I just skimmed it, but it did look like there was.
Yes, and actually, um, the consultants and the company were about twenty million dollars apart. If I remember quick, something like eighteen or twenty million dollars apart. And so we went to the commission, and the commission ruled that everything that we had filed for, except for about eight hundred thousand dollars, I think, they approved. And so out of about forty-three point nine, we got about forty-two point nine. Now, what we did was, they took that into consideration along with this year's rates. And so we asked for twenty-nine million, and they negotiated to the twenty-one point nine.
Yeah, that was, we're, we're roundabout ways, so we ended up with a lower negotiation because of that, okay?
And there's a one-page document in your packet that kinda explains the RRM process, um, and kinda what's happened in the years past. This, I believe, is the seventh year that we've done this RRM agreement. And what it does is keep the cost down for the customer, so, okay?
Right, so it, and I, I think the other thing there, I'm sorry, Sherry.
Go ahead, I, I have one more.
Go, go ahead.
Well, I look back in my ledger book, and five years ago, when natural gas was thirteen dollars a thousand cubic feet, it was thirteen, around thirteen dollars, about five years ago. My gas bill was about the same or a little lower than it was this past winter. And today's natural gas was two dollars sixty-nine cents a thousand versus thirteen dollars five years ago.
Right.
To me, that's hard to understand, uh, when I'm, I'm buying gas, you know, to keep my house warm.
Right, well, just keep in, keep in mind that that cost of the gas is only a pass-through in the bill. We pass the cost that we negotiate, that we have our contracts and in storage, we pass that actual cost on to you. And that's the cost that I was mentioning earlier, that the Railroad Commission reconciles with us, and we have to be within a, a certain, I think it's, you know, percentage one way or the other, or we have to refund or surcharge. I mean, it's quite the calculation, and it's built in with forecast and weather and, and all those type of things. Of course, you can't forecast a hurricane or those type of things either. And those things happen, which I think is part of the reason that cost of the gas was up high then. But the cost for the company to keep providing the service go up every year. And so does the dollars that we spend in capital improvements and infrastructure, and of course, benefits and everything else. Gasoline, diesel, you know, fuel costs, all those things, you know, come into play into those two items on our bill.
Well, yeah, I'm simple. To me, when the gas is thirteen dollars, your bill should be higher than it is when it's two sixty-nine.
Okay.
I mean, that's just.
Right, and I don't have a calculation.
And I keep records from day one to day one.
Okay, let me, let me give you this number.
It don't shake out right.
Okay, so we don't make any money on the cost of the gas. So that GCR recovery on your bill is what it actually, that gas actually costs for that month. We do that monthly, it's a monthly, and we, they regroup and reforecast and try to hit the most perfect number. And I'm glad I'm not in that area of the company, 'cause that is very complicated, and it's based on heating degree days and weather normalization and all kinds of wonderful calculations. But that's how they come to that. That's how they come up to that GCR factor. And so, and we do not make any money on that factor, okay? The only two we make is the delivery charge, which, two thousand twelve.
Somebody has to buy the gas, and.
We do.
The gas is, it's either thirteen dollars or two dollars sixty-nine cents, and it don't quite with my bills.
Okay, so what happens is, we have all these different blends of the gas. And then we have to try, we have to make it work all year long to get to the, the forecast and actual, you know, we, as each month goes by, we have actual costs, and then we have the, you know, the forecasted costs. And so each month, that number changes depending on the previous months and the usage, those type of things. So that's how that gas cost factor ma- uh, moves. Now, there's also a transportation pipeline fee that gets that gas to the city gate, that is included in that gas cost number. And I believe that's in one of the pages of the packet that you got. And let me see if I can tell you which page that is.
All right.
And it shows you how that's calculated. Whoops, turn things up.
There's several of them.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I withdraw the question and apologize to council for the delay, 'cause I'm not ever gonna understand.
Well, Sherry, I, I tell you what we need to do with this, because I'm, I'm with you with some of the questions you're asking. I, I think, Pat, we just need to organize a, a separate work session another time and, and go into this with some more detail and, uh, be able to understand how, how we're getting where we're going. Because it's a, we have the commodity price fluctuation of the gas, and then we got the capital improvement, uh, component of this for the infrastructure. And us just being able to, to, to understand this, I think gets back to the point earlier about, you know, maybe Shelly, you're just coming back and us going through that.
Certainly, be happy to, and we'll, we'll dig in deeper and.
One last comment, and I can see why you have the job you have.
Well, thank you. I have to say, I try to explain things to people on my level, because if I don't understand it, I certainly can explain it to you. And I have to say, this gas complic- it's complicated. And so that's why most of the cities hire the consultants to do all the calculations and review the many, many, many projects that we do every year. And so, uh, hats off to you guys for being a part of that and, and, uh, you know, helping negotiate that. And we do wanna keep the cost down as low as we can for the customer, because there are other options. We're kinda like the cable company, we're optional. We're not really like, everybody has to have electricity. But people can have propane, which generally is higher. And the other thing about propane is it's not readily accessible. If you run out, you've gotta call, you know, if you run out at ten o'clock at night, you haven't been watching your gauge, or whoever's servicing you hasn't kept up with you, or it's been a really cold winter, and they're very busy, those type of things, you have reliability issues. But, um, so there, there are other options, and we're aware of that, and we wanna keep providing safe, reliable service. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Please call me, and I'll get back with you guys on those questions.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, then we'll move to three B, uh, which is to consider resolution twenty fifteen ten to continue to participate with these, uh, cities in the steering committee for the negotiation, negotiated rate. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mayor, could I ask Pat a question about that?
Sure.
Pat, I know that this, this is relatively new ground for you, but in your opinion, are we well represented by the steering committee in the negotiation process?
Well, I think you just heard her say that, that Atmos asked for twenty-nine million, and, and through the negotiation process, uh, with our consultant, that was negotiated down to twenty-one point nine. And so, um, I mean, that's kinda pretty, pretty basic, but that tells me we, we benefit from that.
Okay, so, that was kinda my feeling too. Mayor, I move approval of resolution twenty fifteen ten.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Wagner to, uh, approve resolution twenty fifteen ten authorizing continued participation with Atmos City Steering Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that resolution carries unanimously, twenty fifteen ten. The last comment I wanna make about this, and it's, um, don't laugh when I say this, but, uh, because I'm, this, this is, uh, uh, it's interesting as I, as I hear what this, these cities have come together to really leverage what we couldn't do individually to negotiate something. And, and I'd just like for us to consider, um, how that might work if we had a similar arrangement to deal with, um, let's just say, Tex- dot, for example. Uh, because right now, what we've got is individual cities dealing with regions and dealing with, uh, districts. And, uh, I wonder what the power would be if we organized, uh, ourselves with a group of cities and required the disclosure of the ranking of projects and the dollars that are spent in negotiation of how much our area is getting and stuff like that. That might be a, a wake-up call for a state agency. Uh, now, I realize there, there are, there are functions that the COG provides supposedly for us to do that. Um, but where they sit and the roads they use aren't in Stevenville, Texas. And, um, so I think that's just something for us to maybe think about, um, and how we might do something with that in the future, just a comment. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, citizens' budget requests. And if there's, I know I've got one input, uh, so, uh, Dr. Kud, we'll go ahead and call you up and let you present, and then I'll see if anyone else is, uh, and welcome back, good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe you can hang around for the consent agenda for later?
You need to explain to some of these people what, what to mean.
Okay.
We, we give you credit for it right here. We did, and your honor, Zach, thanks.
First of all, I'd like to, I, I have given a statement to Cindy, and I guess you'll put it in a minute. And so I'll more or less read my comments. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the privilege that you've afforded me to address you on my ideas for the budget for next year. And I'd start by saying, you're in a great place to live in one of the top small towns in the United States. I hope that we can hold on to this honor, but I have concerns about what is currently happening in the city of Stevenville that has to do with finances and how we are, are and are not spending money. I have two major points I'd like to make. The first is, we need to have a balanced budget. And I believe I'm correct that we did do the reserves at least for ten years, if that's sound about right, to have balanced the budget. And so I'm sure if you look at the, the reserves in two thousand and five and look at the reserves now, there's tremendous difference in those. So I think we need to think about this, uh, it seems to me that reserves need to be spent for emergencies and capital projects. Uh, the only thing you have to do is look historically at what happened in Texas in two oh eight, two oh nine, when the cities did not have reserves. And if you remember, a lot of cities fired people, closed swimming pools, I think Fort Worth closed every swimming pool. They, uh, closed libraries, restricted hours for that. So I think we need to really look at it. The second point I'd like to make is that we should not cut services for our citizens if we want to continue to be a great place to live. It seems to me that in the last few years, the budget is concentrated more on spending less money and putting a major emphasis on economic development for the city and not for our citizens. And I'd like to give you a few examples of that. Some of you old people can answer this, some of you cannot. When was the last time we had a recycling program for electronic, uh, recycling, uh, I guess, event for electronics?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
I'll check after you call me.
All right, you checked, okay. I knew it had been a while. Uh, I don't know whether you're aware of it, but I don't think there's any way for a citizen to get rid of a TV or a comput- old computer legally without paying somebody to come take it off or going to Fort Worth and disposing of it. All of these are, have heavy metals in it. And I believe it's probably true that it's illegal in the United States to put heavy metals into garbage and to put it into landfills. And they're full of cadmium, lithium. In fact, uh, there's no way, I think, in the city of Stevenville, you can get rid of your rechargeable batteries legally, unless you take them to Fort Worth or hire somebody to get rid of them. So that's one that, that I think we really need to look at. The other example is one you're very familiar with, and that's the roads in Stevenville. They're not in very good condition, partly it's because of the we- weather, and partly it's because we've not been spending a lot the amount of money that we need to keep them up. And just parenthetically, how can you track business to Stevenville if the roads are housing? The other night, I happened to be going down Dale Street, which is one of the last major reconstructions that's been done in Stevenville. You need to go down Dale sometime, and then go down Frye Street, go down Harbin Street, and go down a few other streets. I believe it used to be, but I, and it may not be correct now, that, uh, Frye Street had, was, now I'm talking about city streets. I'm not talking about highways like Washington, Northland, et cetera. I believe Frye Street was the most heavily traveled street by traffic surveys in the city of Stevenville. Go down it sometime, go down Harbin Street. I know you spent a little money and did a Band-Aid fix on it last summer, but it's not in very good shape. Uh, for years, the people in law, there's been a major cry to do something on Long Street, and that, gentlemen and ladies, would be a very, very expensive undertaking. And I went down Long Street today just to remind myself of how bad it was. And I would just tell you that Holly Street now is a good street, but ten years ago, when I was buying a new car, that's the place we went to see how much it rattled and how good the ride was. And now it's a wonderful street, and that was a major reconstruction, and a lot of money was spent on that. Uh, the other thing that's been brought home to me, not personally, but in my neighborhood, is the fact we've known for years that the sewer system needs to be redone. I live on Lydia Street, I'm sorry, Lydia Avenue, I found out two years ago, it's not Lydia Street. This year, three houses, and I'm not one of them, were flooded out by sewage. One million.
All right.
Uh, and let me just tell you one thing, is I hope you will treat these people right, and I hope you will, will try to fix the problem throughout the city on water, starting water getting into the sewer system. What's that note is, in the state of Texas, you cannot get any kind of insurance to protect yourself in a city's overflow. That's not true in, in states, most states, but it is in Texas. And so you're in complete mercy of the city where you live. And I hope that you will treat the three families that got flooded out, uh, if our insurance, I hope you all can do something about it. I would like to again, to thank you for the ability to come here. And in closing, I think the city council needs to really consider, uh, restoring city services to our citizens so it can continue, and continue to be a great place to live, for your time.
Uh, Dr. Kud, if I could just ask you a quick question? You said restore services.
You said like the electronics?
Electronic recycling specifically.
Recycling is one, and we used to spend a whole lot of money redoing streets, and we've done lately. And we weren't sp- I don't think we've ever spent enough money, to be honest with you.
Okay, so, okay, so it sounded like specifically you're concerned about electronic recycling.
That's, well, I'm concerned about the sewage that we've known about for.
Okay, but I just wanted to clarify.
Oh four, or oh three, we were told that we need to do that. By the way, the city folks from the Water Department, Nick's group, did a super job, and they're still working on the problem, you know, on our street.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do know the electronic recycling was a contract we worked with the city of Fort Worth. And, uh, I don't think we eliminated that. I think that was a, a cycle of them, uh, when they were gonna be here. So we can, I guess, talk about that during our budget discussions and, and make sure we're tracking with, with when that's available, so. All right, the, uh, the next item on the agenda is to, uh, well, let me make sure there aren't any other citizens' requests that we have tonight. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next agenda item. And, uh, that's to consider, uh, approval of participating in a North Central Texas regional labor study. And, uh, Pat, would you give us a quick brief on that?
Sure, Mayor and Council, uh, the North Central, I'm sorry, Workforce Solutions in North Central Texas is, is trying to launch a regional labor study. Uh, this is, uh, they're responding to an overwhelming need from employers, economic development groups, uh, educational institutions. groups, educational institutions, to get a better understanding of workforce supply and demand. The Workforce Solutions is estimating that the cost of this study is going to be about $250,000, and they're seeking assistance in financing that study through the various cities in the region. There will be quite a bit of information generated from that. I did visit with our consultant who's doing our economic strategic plan. She thought there was some value in the city's participation in that, that there was an opportunity to gain some information regarding workforce availability that, as you recall from our debriefing, was one of the concerns that she had. So based on that, it was my recommendation that we participate in it. They were requesting the cities our size contribute $15,000 towards the cost of the study. I've indicated to Mr. Anderson that the city would be willing to participate in the amount of $5,000, but I'll leave that to council discretion. They were appreciative of the offer of $5,000, but you can choose to decide if we want to spend five, if we want to spend 15, if we want to spend somewhere in the middle, or if we don't want to spend anything at all and not participate.
Any questions for Pat?
Pat, the funding for this would come from the Economic Development Fund, is that correct?
It could, yes. It could.
Would it be your recommendation to authorize the expenditure of $5,000 to participate in this so we'll have access to the information?
I don't think $5,000 is a reasonable request, and I would ask council to approve that amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I deal with TWC through, anybody who's got a business does, and most of this information, they actually already have available, if you call and you can get them to give you some of these figures. It was unclear to me what the buy-in was going to buy us that was more specific to Stevieville, and I'm not sure TWC is actually a suitable organization maybe to do this. They're really more of a tax-collecting, pass-through administering unemployment benefits organization. And I'm not sure that we might not benefit maybe from spending that money in a different way. There's information that a prospective company coming here would probably prefer to have that, and you would maybe know this, do we have, for example, actual traffic counts for Stevieville, for 377, the other two loops, the 281?
We could get them. I don't have the numbers available right now.
But there, someone has done that recently in the, okay, because that's a useful thing. I tried to call the college today. It turned out it's very hard to find this information out. They'll tell you how many students they have, but the graduation rate is hard to find out. How many nursing students graduate, for example? How many of those people are graduating with masters versus bachelors? How many bachelors of arts? How many bachelors of science? That kind of information would probably be very useful to prospective employers. There are also things like cost of living, local amenities, that sort of thing. I understand these, the economic development consultant we hired is supposed to work on some of this, but I did not know if they had actually given us a list of specifics for our particular community that this buy-in would, you know, open up for us, I guess. Because it's covering quite a large area.
I have not received that, but the Workforce Solutions is, they're not the ones conducting the study, they're sponsoring it, they're seeking to finance it.
Right.
TIP Strategies out of Austin is the group actually doing the study. In fact, they were one of the first firms that I contacted to consider doing our economic strategic plan. They're considered up at the top, and they declined to participate in that process. But, so I think you'll have a very comprehensive study.
So this might be a cheap buy-in to get useful information? I guess it was just the things they listed here. My other concern is this is more about kind of the past, as far as which those figures, like I said, are accessible from the Texas Workforce Commission. How many past, what our past unemployment is, what categories those are in and all that, as opposed to maybe some future information going forward? And those were my concerns. I'm not necessarily against doing it, but I didn't know if we had thought about those things.
I don't see the relevancy myself.
I'm sorry?
I don't see the relevancy myself.
Okay.
There could be some interesting information that came out of this, but I think I wouldn't want to see something that was more geared towards Stevieville. And to be quite honest with you, I think it probably gets delayed to the term paper for it, I'd be totally agree.
Okay. Well, as I said, your options are to approve nothing, or to approve five, or to approve anywhere between five and 15. It is your decision.
Do you think we can get the information for five? Is that your feeling, that we can do that?
They've already, this, Mr. Anderson with Workforce Solutions was, his reply back to me was they were grateful for that potential donation.
I noticed, I think the information might be interesting. I've noticed on their fee schedule, they seem to load up the smaller cities, if you know what I mean, which just sounds kind of strange to me. It only goes up to 20,000 if you're greater than 50,000 people, which you could go up to, I don't know how much. But still, I think it might be worth $5,000 to get the information.
Did Mr. Smith?
One of the things I don't remember exactly, Walt may have answered, when are we supposed to redo the PACE plan again? We're supposed to readdress that, is it this, next year?
Next year.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen. So we need to address that anyway. We're going to end up paying for something at that point. Will this help resolve that issue? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is that what we do is we make sure that when we look at comparable wages, we don't look at government wages, we look at the real-world wages, and that's what we compare to. So would this help with that process, do you all think?
I don't know that wage information is going to be in it.
I think, and Sherri, some of your questions, for those of you that haven't met Ken Anderson, I know he's been down here, and he's the gentleman that was responsible for getting the grants for FMC, Fiber Grade Ranger College, almost $2 million worth of grants that we received from them.
Looks like wage.
They are, I think in the, this is not the Texas Workforce.
They have to do the labor market characteristics.
And they are in the process, I believe, of trying to create some more specific tangible relationships between entities like Ranger, Tarleton, and school districts with what existing labor needs are, with what future demands may be. And so part of what I think is happening here is they're trying to get their arms around from a regional perspective that we would be a part of. What are, what is the available workforce? And if it is weak in an area, how can the local, and you see there number three, education and training providers, seeking to align their curriculum and programs with worker and employer needs? So I read that, and I see part of this is going to be us being able to, with this information, inform Ranger and Tarleton about things they may offer that they're not today. And maybe from a regional perspective, be able to do that as you want.
Maybe our SISB's.
Right.
Yeah, well, now, I did think about that.
Because they are talking about the school, the school five.
Because the school, there are some things that need to be addressed, I think, for workforce. I guess my main question then would be, this $5,000 is going to buy us into the community level partnership instead of the 15? I mean, they've agreed to that?
Yes, yes. And as you'll notice, note on the next page under deliverables, one of the deliverables is a separate profile for each partner community. So I think that would be our expectation that we would receive a profile specific to Stevieville, as well as regional.
As I recall, the prior city council, when they were studying the wage rates and so forth, they decided not to even ask an outside consultant for outside information. And I thought we've needed that information for a while, and this is another way to find out what other people are doing for $5,000. And we've seen me like we all, we might want to know what other people are doing. And it says labor market characteristics, community labor market profile. I just think that's important for $5,000, that's me.
Your point, I'm confused a little bit, because Sherri kept referring to the TWC, but that's not the people we're dealing with here, is it? This is a completely separate organization entity.
Right.
That was my understanding, and when she kept referring it to the Texas Workforce Commission, I thought it might be I misunderstood.
No, I apologize, but I guess I don't have a great, it's a bureaucracy, you know, commissioning a study, and so there are, those things are always fraught, and that was my concern with it. And I'm sorry, I shouldn't have kept referring to the TWC, but yes. But it does sound like if they're going to let us buy into that information at the $5,000 level, then that seems like something we should probably go ahead and do.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to participate in the study with the North Central Texas Labor Study for $5,000.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to authorize staff to engage with the North Texas Regional Labor Study for $5,000. Any discussion? Proceed to vote, then. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries, approving that as presented. All right, the next item on the agenda is the, and I'll tell you what, Pat, we should do this, we should have Ken Anderson come down here and give a presentation to the council about what he's up to, and maybe give Sherri his number so she can call and talk to him. He's been here, he's familiar with Dr. Schindler at Ranger and Tom Greger at Tarleton, and I think they would take us up on that offer, might help us get the information that we would need. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the council committee appointments, and what Cindy has passed out, I think everybody's got a copy, you should have the blueprint on here, is the recommendations that I've put together for committee assignments. We've got two new members to the council. What I've attempted to do is keep the existing committee membership pretty much intact, but then accounting for the new members. And with the departure of the Personnel Committee Chair, I asked Sherri if she would mind taking over the chair of that committee, and she's agreed to do that. And so that's one move of an existing council seat from the nominations to the Personnel Committee, so that's the one change there. And then for Rhett and Mark, Rhett and Mark both, your first two choices are accommodated here to reflect those that you provided, and with the nominations committee chairmanship there with Rhett, that was his first choice. If you don't have a committee chair, then you get the opportunity, or if you want to think of it that way, to be on four committees. So Mark, that you're with the four committees, and what I did with both Rhett and Mark is add you as new members to the Finance and Personnel Committee, because your perspective and, you know, just new set of eyes on what those committees do, I know would bring some value to the discussion. So that's there for consideration, and I'll answer any questions if anybody has any, or entertain a motion to proceed if not.
Mayor, I move approval of the council committee 2015 assignments as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. McClinton, to adopt the committee assignments as presented. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries. Committee assignments approved as presented. All right, next is the election of the mayor pro tem, and we'll do this by nomination and vote, so I'll just open the floor to any nomination.
We're going to nominate Russ McDaniel as mayor pro tem.
It's been moved by Mr. Levine, seconded by Mr. Harrison, to elect Russ McDaniel as mayor pro tem. Any discussion? We will proceed to vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Russ McDaniel. All right.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
You did tell him there's not any extra compensation for him.
He's donating his big check out.
Yeah. All right, next, we've got currently as our representative to the COG, Mr. Wagner, and I don't know if you're willing to continue in that capacity.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'll entertain a nomination for that.
Mayor, I nominate Boyd Wagner to continue as our voting rep of the North Texas, Texas, North Central Texas Council of Governments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to appoint Boyd Wagner as the representative, voting representative to the North Central Texas COG. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that's approved, Mr. Wagner, thank you. All right, now the consent agenda.
Mayor and Honored Joe Coot, I'm moved that we adopt the, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Levine, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the consent agenda as provided. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved as presented.
One word of recognition, and perhaps explaining a little bit, Mr. Coot, when he had the opportunity to look at the consent agenda, he almost always removed an item or two for further discussion, and so almost always without fail, if it goes through, we say, where's Dr. Coot when you need him?
Where's Joe when we need him?
Okay, Pat, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to do is thank the staff, all the directors and all the folks working for them, all the city employees for the work that they've done during the storm. We've had people working out in all the elements, working several days in a row without time off to try to take care of, try to recover from the damage that's been inflicted upon the community. And they've done a fantastic job, and like you said earlier, you just, you can't say enough, but I want all my staff to know that public safety, public works, community services, all of them, that they've done fantastic, and we are very grateful. Several meetings coming up this month. On June the 9th, we will have a meeting of the Public Works Committee. That'll be here at City Hall at 5:30. On June the 11th, we'll have a council work session on economic development. We'll also have a meeting of the Public Health and Safety Committee. That will also be at 5:30 here in the council training room. On June 23rd and 24th, we'll have a budget retreat to discuss budget issues. That'll be from 9:00 to 4:00 each day, and that will be out at Belavita. And for anyone that might be concerned, the folks at Belavita have graciously donated that facility to us. There is no cost to the taxpayer to rent that facility. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Pat? All right, then, we'll proceed then to council members. If there are any comments, Mark, we'll start with you.
No, I just echo what Pat said about the city staff, a great job to everybody during the storms.
All right, thanks, Floyd.
I'd just say I personally have a feeling of optimism about this city that I haven't had in the past, and I just think things are beginning to go the way they should be, and I'm just happy about it and hope it continues. And I think it has to do a lot with the... I think it has to do a lot with the leadership of the new mayor and some other things, but I just think that things are beginning to go better around here, so that's all.
Can you leave your time?
Mr. Sreen?
I want to say to Nick, particularly your staff, each time I've called you, if staff, if citizens have called me, I appreciate the quick response. You know, both the situation that Dr. Coot mentioned earlier, you're responding to that and the others that I've called you about, thank you very much to all your staff. Thanks.
I recently did a construction project and I would just like to praise the planning and building services department for the ease of which that was done. It has been completed. The citizens are enjoying their, you know, new ability for clean, dry, brand-new storage and I appreciate it. It was a pleasure working with you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harrison. All right, Mr. Nick?
I just want to echo what Pat said and this reinforces the fact that our employees are one of our greatest assets at Stephenville. The services that they provide and the skill and the courtesy and the other things that we get here, you don't find in very many other places. And we need to be appreciative of that and recognize that. Thank y'all, all of you.
Ms. Zachary.
I'd just like to repeat what everyone here has said. I just, y'all were just amazing during all of this. It was historic and unexpected and difficult to deal with and everybody did it with grace and goodwill and I really appreciate that. I did also want to address one thing. I don't know how that needs to be, but I didn't want to drop the ball on the P and Z changes for the R2 and R3 or if we're re-looking at that, since the builders were kind of ready to go and all of these things, the gears always sort of slowly, I don't know if I needed to add a discussion to that as the agenda or how that worked.
Judy has already had a meeting with several developers and she's preparing some communication to go out to the entire council over that process.
Okay, great, thanks, appreciate it.
It'll be coming in the next few days.
Okay, great, great.
Sherry, you're good? Okay.
I would like to know if you can.
No, you haven't. Those are good questions. I tell you, it's, it is, it's really good to be sitting here through all that has happened and realize, as we have all said this evening, how great a place this is to live and it's the people that make it special. And, you know, like I have shared with people that come from out of town about what makes Stephenville so special. And I always talk about how it's a friendly, hard-working community and that's, I think, what's been reflected in the city staff's performance since the storm. And I think really the community coming together and helping each other and that's just really, really important. I would for the, on the council's, the staff's benefit in preparation for June 11th, there was a draft copy of articles of formation that were sent out, that's not the right term, but that were sent out. If you would please review that and if you have comments about the structure of the EDC that from your perspective as a council member you would like to see incorporated, please provide those to Pat so he can collect those. And what I've asked him to do is, since we're subject to the Open Meetings Act and can't fire emails back and forth to each other saying, here's what I think or whatever, if you can just provide your input to Pat, Pat will consolidate that and then get that back to us as a group so we can see all the comments that everybody has going into the meeting on June 11th. Because what we've got to do is simple things like what do we call the EDC? What's it called? And then what's the membership of the board? And we're going to, we'll spend that meeting talking about those specific issues.
And for the group, Jeff Moore will be there at the meeting as well to answer questions that you all might have.
Let me ask, one more question about this email situation that we've heard about, you know, should I, that's pretty confusing. I just called you and asked you about that in the business, did I get that through now?
Well, let me just comment, one of the first things I did when I took office was ask for a city email because I wanted all my official business to come through a city account. And it has worked really well for me and the staff here helped me set up my computers so that I get all my email to a central account. I don't have to, I'm going to have to log in twice, but it all comes to the account and I'm able to read it just like it's just a normal email. So it's, it allows me to keep things separate as far as accounts are concerned. I know the staff can, if they could walk me through it, they can help anybody, so.
Basically a way to keep the city business in one email area and your personal stuff in another, is that what it's about?
Yeah, that's what it helps do. Because as Pat said, when, if there's something that comes up, a lawsuit or, you know, who knows what, and somebody's wanting to get access to that information and your personal email is where you've kept all your city emails, well then the lawsuit can have access to your entire email. But then you could, I mean, you could wipe your hard drive and nobody would be able to have access to it.
If you want to run for president, we need to do this, I guess.
Missing 12 minutes on the tape.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
Okay, we'll adjourn at 6:45. Thank y'all and have a good evening.